Thank you for coming to our meeting tonight. Before our meeting begins, we have a pledge of allegiance offered by Commissioner Lockhart. I'm sorry, invocation offered by Commissioner Lockhart followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, thank you for letting us gather here today. I ask you to strengthen our minds, strengthen our spirits and hearts that we may grow together and stay together and form the best decisions for our city. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Cresser, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Lockhart?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Misterors, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of November 12, 2019. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I'm with you to accept the minutes of the November 12 meeting and expense for the formal reading.
Second. Then a motion, second discussion. Without objection, the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. So, audience participation. Anyone wishing to address any of our agenda items, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts or questions. And as to the questions, we will attempt to answer those during the normal course of our meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city commissioners. We have one new city commissioner to my left here. Thanks for coming in, listening to what's going on. Tip Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. The question I have pertains to the regular agenda item number one, which is the project funding agreement with Cedar Point Park LLC for $2.25 million worth of issuance of bonds and notes, which Cedar Fair will pay back $550,000 per year based on their property taxes from the property, the property TIF. If anybody has followed along, page nine, section 3.4 states that the city will be conveyed. Don't really know what the amount of property is, but it says lakefront property, and I don't know how big of an issue that really is, but to let you know, that's actually the back bay, that's not lakefront property. The question that I would have along with that is exactly what and how much property will be conveyed to the city through this project? And moving into the future, how will the city maintain that property? Second question is, it looks like there's going to be a second traffic study that's going to be shared expense between Cedar Point and the city of Sandusky. And my question would be, will the TIF pay for that study? And my third question will be, is any of the TIF property taxes from Cedar Fair going to be going towards the widening of Cleveland Road into the future? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwanger. And I forgot to acknowledge Commissioner-elect Meinzler. Thank you for being with us. Folks at home, it is a long tradition in the city of Sandusky that our commissioners-elect have a right to participate in our discussions, ask questions, make comments as they wish, not to vote, of course, but for the next, for the next couple of meetings, we welcome you here. And I know Mr. Harris is looking forward to coming next month. We congratulate him as well on his election, and I'm sure he'll be here on the last two meetings to start to get up to speed. And for the folks at home, we have an onboarding process that we have observed for many years for the new commissioners. I think Mr. Meinzler probably knows his way around the city pretty well, at least the fire department, but that's an opportunity that's made open to all the commissioners for a refresher, to the extent they want to see some of the facilities that they haven't seen in a little while. It's a good opportunity. Other public comment, questions? If not, then we will, I would appreciate, if not, then I would appreciate a motion to accept the communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation.
So move.
Second.
Then a motion, and second discussion. Without objection, the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Commissioners, first, we have several items on the consent agenda. I don't know if this will provide Mrs. Cresser with relief from pronouncing the name of all these various chemicals produced or purchased by the water treatment plant. I'm hoping not, because it's always kind of entertaining, but, but are there any items on the consent agenda that you would like to have transferred to the regular agenda? If not, then--
Just a question. Do we need to move it down to talk about this traffic study on that TIF or not?
It's on the regular agenda.
That's regular?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Cresser, would you present the regular agenda, please?
Yes, Mr. Murray. Item A on the consent agenda are eight separate ordinances with various vendors for the purchase of chemicals for calendar year 2020 for Big Island Water Works and the wastewater treatment plant. Item B is payment to Arthur J. Gallagher and Company for the 2019-2020 property casualty and liability insurance. Item C is the renewal of transportation services agreement with the Erie County Board of Developmental Disabilities for the Sandusky Transit System. Item D is renewal of a transportation services agreement with Cancer Services for the Sandusky Transit System. Item E is the transfer of a parcel at 601 Hancock Street to the Erie County Land Reutilization Corporation. And item F is a resolution of necessity for permission to bid the CDBG fiscal year 2019 demolition project.
Misterors, having heard these items on the consent agenda, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move that we accept the consent agenda and declaring that all ordinances and resolutions as drafted and presented to the city commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions A through F, whether it be in accordance with section 13 or 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion, and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I would just like to give Mr. Lasco an opportunity to give a little more information about item E, the transfer of property. I think it's important that we know when we're dealing with property that's under kind of city control, that we want to make sure that we're not just going to demolition first and not looking for a possibility of rehab. So, he had a great explanation today for me, so I thought he could share with the audience.
Mr. Lasco, if you would, please.
Yes, through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Lloyd. This property in particular, due to being unsold at multiple sheriff's sales and also approved by our land bank committee in the past for acquisition, will be acquired by the city and immediately transferred to the county land bank for demolition. But I think what's important to note is although it's not a historic property, there's certainly some, some details of the property that make it stand out, which I think was part of the reason for Commissioner Lloyd reaching out. But as I had mentioned to her through conversations, this property in particular, not only was it ordered down by our chief building official based on the percentage of deterioration, but even more importantly, this property had subsequently in the past, twice this year, gone to sheriff's sale and been purchased, but then when both of those winning bidders had access to the property, they vacated their acquisition once they were able to get inside the property. And then most recently, in November, the property went back to sheriff's sale a third time and was not bid on for lack of bidders, which is why it reverted to the city. So, we certainly put a lot of due diligence, and others have as well, to see if this property was salvageable, such as the property at 1215 Central. And the ultimate decision was it's not, and I think that's been evidenced throughout 2019. So, that's just a little background for the decision to push this property towards demolition.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lasco. Anything further, commissioners? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion first, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and resolutions, please.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and resolutions, please.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Those resolutions and ordinances are adopted. Item number one, please, Mrs. Cresser.
Yes, item number one is the first reading of an ordinance approving a project funding agreement with Cedar Point Park LLC relating to various development activities in connection with certain property located in the city.
Misterors, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move the adoption of this ordinance under the first reading.
Second.
Then a motion, and second discussion. Mr. Whoopser, you suggested that you might lead off the discussion of this item and the related items, so I'll give you that opportunity, please.
Sure. Thank you, Commission President, Commission. This legislation pertains to the tax increment financing that was passed last year by the city commission and supported by the Sandusky City Schools to take parcels dedicated to the Cedar Point Sports Center, and then some ancillary parcels adjacent to the Cedar Point Sports Center to be able to make specific public improvements. And as part of that TIF's existence, we've been into a long conversation with Cedar Fair about the specific opportunities and also the needs of the project itself. So, as you know, the Cedar Point Sports Center indoor project is a large project that is a partnership between Erie County, Cedar Fair, and the Firelands Regional Medical Center. There is private dollars from Firelands and Cedar Fair in the deal, as well as lodging tax dollars on a countywide basis that's important. They identified a project gap for infrastructure and approached us about whether the TIF could potentially fill some of that project gap. And so, that began a conversation between city staff and Cedar Fair that ultimately led to this $2.25 million contribution to the project that is before you tonight. We wanted to largely explain, in addition to that $2.25 million in support of the project, and Aaron can give the details as to what specifically that will go towards, which gaps to fill, but that TIF, a piece of it will go to that. We wanted to make sure that the assurances that the city would be protected, and so, based in this project agreement is a baseline payment that Cedar Fair will pay as the owner of the property in question, at least $550,000 annually in property taxes that'll go into a special TIF fund. And so, the $550,000 annually that will go into the special TIF fund, I want to be careful to point out a few things. One, is that any existing tax dollars on that property before the improvements made for the Cedar Point Sports Center will still be paid by Cedar Fair and won't go into that special fund, but will go to all of the undies that receive property taxes. So, it is only on the improvements that there will be at least $550,000 a year. We actually believe that the overall amount going into that fund is going to be greater than $550,000, but at no point, even if they got their property devalued based on anything that happens in the market over a 30-year period, would they pay less than $550,000 annually. And so, what will happen is that that annual payment will go towards creating financing that will pay back the $2.25 million to the city for that initial upfront payment. And as you can see, you know, in four years of a 30-year life payment, we'll have paid off that piece, or ultimately, we'll have collected enough to offset that piece, but then we'd have another 26 years annually. And so, what is intended for those dollars to go to, and it was asked about Mr. Schwanger, about the donation of property, that property, and I don't know the specific acreage, and either Matt or Aaron could speak to that, or maybe Angie, or we could get that details to you before you vote on this a second time. That property is being donated to create Landing Park, which is a bayfront park, as Mr. Schwanger pointed out correctly, that will ultimately be linked back to the city of Sandusky, eventually throughout the city of Sandusky by the Sandusky Bay Pathway. And so, in addition to this $2.25 million that will go towards making the project possible, we'll put future dollars collected in the TIF account towards the construction of the pathway and Landing Park itself. That was what those donations are for. And then one final point, in addition to that, oh, and just to answer Mr. Schwanger's other questions quickly. The specifics of the property will have to be answered by, either in the next meeting or by someone on staff that has those details. The maintenance of the property, we're in talks with the Cleveland, or the Erie Metro Parks about potentially taking on the long-term maintenance, but we're also putting a plan together for that now, but that is a work in progress. The traffic study, we don't know yet exactly how that will be funded. And then finally, no, the funding will not go towards Cleveland Road, it'll go towards green space and pathway improvements, but we are actively working with the county as to improvements on Cleveland Road that we believe can be locally and state-funded in addition to that. The only other thing I wanted to mention before turning over to the Commissioner to Matt or Aaron to fill in any gaps, is in addition to the benefits of the improvements beyond the sports center, or the tax base, which will grow because the sports center exists, we're entering into a marketing partnership with Cedar Fair that will allow us access to be able to place ads for the rest of the city on Cedar Point Television, which over the life of the agreement has a value in excess of, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. In addition to that, we'll have opportunities both digitally at the sports center, both the indoor and outdoor facility, as well as to have static signs in place that will be able to market the rest of the city, so that all the visitors that this facility will bring in will provide us with opportunities to let them know everything else that's happening in Sandusky that during their stay here, that they'll be able to take part in. So, we think that'll lead to increased economic development beyond what happens at the sports center itself, as well as the lodging and restaurant and other visits or spending that'll take place because it exists. So, that's the basics of the agreement, but again, it's been part of a long conversation with Cedar Fair. We think the benefits to the city by far outweigh the payments that we'll be making from tax increment financing that is ultimately paid by taxes paid by Cedar Point itself.
Good, thank you, Mr. Whoopser. Lasco.
Yes, through you, Mr. President, members of the commission. I just have a few points to add, although the city manager did really well on touching certain elements of the TIF and the financing. One thing I just want to remind everyone, when we passed the TIF, and this commission passed the TIF in spring of 2018, there was also a school compensation agreement attached to that TIF, or introduced as part of that TIF. So, actually, 10% of the $550,000 a year minimum will be returned back to the schools. So, I did want to just clarify that point. So, that nets out to about $495,000 a year to the cities, but again, that is a baseline. So, we do believe that the value will increase, but that is unknown, but what we do know is that the $550,000 is the minimum. I do think it's important, too, for budgetary purposes, we don't usually have the luxury with a TIF of knowing what those minimum payments will be, because a lot of times the TIF is in place before the property has been appraised. So, a lot of times, it's, you're taking a risk to finance certain things before you've got two or three years of revenue to understand what you can backstop and what you can finance. I do think this is a great luxury, that we have that minimum set for budgetary planning and project planning going into the future. And then thirdly, which I know Aaron will speak to, some of the very specific infrastructure improvements that this will fund, but again, unlike some of the other TIFs, such as the Chesapeake, which has a very finite boundary that we can make improvements within and can also be more flexible, in that it can fund private projects as gap subsidy, I just wanted to remind the commission and specifically the public that this type of TIF is not a boundary TIF, but it does have to be used on public infrastructure, but that public infrastructure can really be anywhere within the city, but really, what it has to do is it has to be to the benefit of the TIF parcels. So, things on that property and around that property makes sense, but it could be a little bit more flexible, so long as you can connect the dots between benefit to the TIF parcel. So, those are just a few things I wanted to add, and I can turn things over to Director Klein about the specifics, about what the $2.25 million is going to impart.
Just before you speak out, Mr. Lasco, when we hear from Mr. Klein, could you remind us why it is that we don't know exactly what the TIF payments are going to be?
On most projects, or this one in particular?
These projects, yes.
Yeah, a lot of times, and almost every time, a TIF is put into place prior to construction or during construction, so the auditor has not come in yet and reappraised a property. And that's really what sets sort of the benchmark, or initial benchmark, for what the service payments are going to be, and a lot of times, those are in flux every time an auditor does a revaluation of properties. So, I do think this is very unique to our benefit in that it creates a minimum. Even if the property is devalued for whatever reason, these service payments have to be made at the $550,000. So, this is very rare, but I do think it's to all of our benefit to have some predictability from a financing standpoint going forward.
That was my question, thank you, you answered that. Mr. Klein.
Yes, sir. Through you, Mr. President. I'll speak more to the infrastructure that's included throughout the project. As with any capital improvement project, whether it's a private investment or public, you're going to have to connect to the sanitary system, the water lines, those types of things. And as far as this project is concerned, there are going to be quite a few new pieces of infrastructure that are going to be turned over to the city, and some pieces that would also be turned over to the county. Those portions that are outside of the city that are within the county portion, those would be turned over to them. We would be accepting the infrastructure that's within the city corporation limits. So, one example is that we had asked them, when they were originally looking at putting a driveway off of the western side of the property to extend into the parking lot, we asked them to improve that and bring it up to a roadway standard. We wanted them to be able to put driveway aprons, but also give us the opportunity and the ability to extend that roadway, put our own driveway and our own access to the Landing Park. If they had only done a driveway, we would have been landlocked on the north end of Landing Park, so we asked them to improve that from a typical driveway standard, which is obviously not as robust as a roadway pavement, and increase that. We also asked them, on the eastern side of the property, where they have the new sanitary and the new water lines, we asked them to extend those to the northern property limit where they are, so that we could then tie in without having to tear up their new parking lot and extend those up to the Landing. So, there were things that the city had asked for during the design phase of this project, and that dates back over a year. As part of that, we also made sure that we were allowed to do our own inspection. So, we had the city's inspector out there throughout the entire year, making sure that things were designed appropriately, that they were being constructed appropriately to our standards. There was actually a couple times that we asked them to dig back up a trench and uncover a water line, because we wanted to make sure that when we were to accept those in the future, that they were actually installed, the trenches had the appropriate backfill, and everything was going to be done properly. So, I want to give the assurance that we did the due diligence throughout the process to make sure that everything was done right. There's also going to be storm sewers out there, there's a culvert under the new roadway, there's the street lighting, curbs, gutters, catch basins, the green infrastructure, all those things, and not just our portion of it, but even the ODOT right-of-way widening on State Route 6. There were additional turn lanes that were added as part of this project, based on an original traffic study that was done. Now, to a point, a question that was brought up earlier, the original traffic study did not warrant a signal, but as we all know, a signal warrant does not always mean that we don't want to have one there. And ODOT deferred to the city and said, well, we're not going to make that decision, that's on the corporation limit, so we'll let you guys make that call. We wanted to make sure that after the Landing project is done, and after both phases of the sports center are done, that we wanted to do that traffic study after the fact and actually make that determination. So, another improvement that Cedar Fair made was they installed all the underground infrastructure, the conduits, and planned where a potential future signal would go, so that we could put those foundations in and put the signals up if needed. So, it's been an absolutely great partnership with them. We've worked hand in hand, and they've allowed our inspector on site, they've dug things up, it's been wonderful working with them. And even at that, we're requesting the as-built information for all the utilities, for all of the roadway improvements and everything else, and we've also been allowed to go out and geolocate with our own GIS equipment as they were continuing through the project. A couple more, in answer to elaborate on city manager's response about the donation, is that that property, we're looking to get something coming in maybe at the next commission meeting about that donation. We're working through the Landing, so the timing of that was a little bit different than this one, but the property that we would be accepting is right around 30 acres, so we're hoping to get that donation agreement in here, and that would be extending from Cleveland Road up the western side of the property, and then anything north that's really in the wetlands area that goes right along the bay, where we would have the canopy walk, the extension, the pier, all those things. So, it's been surveyed by EDG as part of the Landing. EDG has also been heavily involved in this process, making sure that we had enough room that we didn't have to do extra wetlands delineations and increase the cost of our project based on their design. So, we've had a lot of moving parts as they've been moving through this project over the last year and a half. I think that was all the questions that were presented, but if anybody has any more, I'd certainly love to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Commissioners, questions and comments?
Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Just a question for the manager. With regard to the marketing piece of this, dealing with Cedar Point Television, what's the, are there any, what does that entail in terms of, you indicated marketing city of Sandusky, which is kind of broad. Is there any restrictions on, are we talking about businesses in town, or just our?
It would, so through the commission president to the commissioner, it is generally worded in the agreement that it is our prerogative as to what would go on the marketing. Basically, on Cedar Point TV, we'd always have an ad in rotation on that, and there's a general cost, I think a buy generally is around 20, or is in the several thousands dollars range. It would be up to us to determine what would be most appropriate to market with that. We did put wording in there that we could potentially work with Shores and Islands on that, only because the cost of the production itself would be up to us, and so we thought if we were able to work some of their marketing and branding into it, that they could help pay for some production value, and we could, and we actually were able to run an ad, I don't know if you saw it, this past summer, that they offered to us after we won the Best Coastal Small Town USA Today Award, and we did an award for that, that the basic marketing was America's Best Coastal Small Town is right next door to America's Best Amusement Park, and kind of tried to, and the only thing I would say is, when we do that marketing, I think it's important to note that the audience for that will be customers of the sports center, customers of Cedar Point, and so, you might market differently to a tourist than you would to a local as to which assets you might be able to get. So, I wouldn't market Cedar Point in that ad, but you might market to find your way downtown, for example, from there, so we can get them to find other dollars in the city. But we do maintain flexibility, but we did work right in that we could partner with Shores and Islands on that, so that they might be able to help with some of the production value as well.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments?
I just want to point out what a sea change this represents in the relationship between the city and Cedar Point. It wasn't so long ago that Cedar Point remained on its island, on its peninsula, and didn't have a whole lot of interaction with the city. That was the business model they pursued then. It wasn't done with malice, that was just the business model they pursued. About six years ago, they really changed their attitude, in particular, it was Matt Womet, who was then the CEO, today remains the chairman of the board. They saw an opportunity to assist the city and help themselves at the same time. They've long talked about the desire to become more of a multi-day stay, and that obviously helps them sell additional tickets and additional hotel rooms, but by seeing the city of Sandusky revitalized, it's provided an opportunity for multi-generational families who are visiting the area to have different things that meet the needs or wishes of different people who are visiting the city. The level of coordination and cooperation that Mr. Klein outlined in his comments is extraordinary. That would not have been possible with Cedar Point six years ago, and to have this relationship of trust and confidence is really an enormous economic development for our area. We don't think about it that way, we don't talk about it very much, but it's extraordinarily important, and Mr. Whoopser also touched on that level of cooperation. I mean, these marketing, the ability to market all of Sandusky to 3 million visitors a year is extraordinary, and the ability to do it for free is really amazing. This grant of property, and I can't get over how unusual it is for now 201-year-old city to develop a new waterfront park. That doesn't happen very often, and it's really a special thing that's happening, so we're very appreciative of that. And Mr. Lasco, your fine work with the TIF and working through the complexities of that, that is such an important economic development tool. Here we take what was an airport closed down, lot of concern that nothing would happen, and that was part of the continued downward spiral of the city, and here to have so much invested, to have that be able to pay for a new waterfront park and other improvements
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
That passes on first reading, subject to a subsequent vote. Item number two, please, Mrs. Cresser.
Yes, item number two is an ordinance approving a perpetual easement granted to the city for a storm sewer for the McCartney Road reconstruction, storm sewer and storm pump station project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension and will use in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion in second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I'm sure that Mr. Klein can provide us with the intricacies of this. This is a project that's been a long time coming, and those people in McCartney Road will be thrilled with the beginning and I think even thrilled with what we anticipate to be a July of next summer ending. So I'll give the microphone to you, Mr. Klein.
Mr. Klein, as you address item number two, feel free to, as you wish, to address items three and four, which are obviously related. And this represents a very, very, very big lift, again, on the part of your department.
Sure. Through you, Mr. President, I think what would be best is to kind of run through item number three, give an overview of the project, and then address items two and four afterwards. So as everybody's aware, we've been working through the McCartney Road project. As with many of our projects, similar to Shoreline Drive, it goes from a resurfacing and surface project to a utility project. It was very clear early on that we really needed to do a lot of work on the storm sewer system that was existing. A lot of that system was a legacy system. It was brought in when the properties were annexed, when the roadways were annexed. We had done some work in the past, but it wasn't significant enough to handle all of the problems that we had out there. So this project quickly turned into a storm sewer improvement project. As part of that, we wanted to also make sure that the issues that we've had recently with the bay flowing back into the properties were addressed. So we extended our scope northerly up Mix Ditch and even past Barrett Road. So we couldn't go past the railroad, obviously, but we could get as much as we could, as close as we could. So this entire project, we're going to be doing a storm sewer for the majority of McCartney Road. We're going to extend that sewer up and outfall to Mix Ditch. And then at the northern end of Mix Ditch, where it is on the south side of Barrett Road, we'll be putting in a small storm sewer lift station that would drain the ditches during those high rain events. Also, on the outlet of that storm lift station, we're going to put some backflow devices to make sure that we can still pump out at the same time, even if the bay level is high and we're getting those high rain waters. And I want to be very clear, this is not going to solve every problem out there. I think we've stated that many times here, but we're doing everything we can possibly do to resolve the flooding issues. And in that regards, I'd like to commend my staff, Sewer Department, Josh Snyder, and even Jeff Keefe, when he was here, working hand in hand with the folks farming the field, the property owners, and trying to get those private issues resolved and playing the middleman on a lot of those private issues. Those are not easy to get in the middle of. So since we're going into Mix Ditch, we also plan to do some ditch dredging, which gets into item number two and why we need a storm sewer easement through this property. This, again, is a legacy outfall that we have that goes into that ditch. We're going to be removing that. We're also going to be going through some temporary easements that we've obtained on those adjacent lots to dredge the ditch as we move through it. And then in the end, we're also going to be resurfacing the entire length of McCartney Road. When we went for the OPWC funding for $175,000 a year ago, a couple of years ago, we had included three other roadways, three small roads that were nearby, Ward, Church, and Niagara. And we're also going to be resurfacing those as part of this overall project. We figured while the contractor was out there, we might as well address a couple other streets. So we threw that into there and got $175,000 in OPWC funding. So when it's all said and done, the storm portion is obviously going to be the largest portion of the project, and that is going to be around 1.3. But when all the contingency and OWDA administrative fees and other things are added to it, that total OWDA loan, which is item number four, would be right around 1.5 million for the storm sewer portion and lift station and dredging of that ditch for the project. And then we would include $175,000 for issue eight for the resurfacing, and then $175,000 from OPWC for the remainder of the $350,000 estimate for resurfacing. So I believe that addresses all three of those projects. One last thing that I think is very important to note is that we were $150,000 under the original engineer's estimate because of the time that we bid it. That was something that we saw with Pierce, with Buchanan, and as we go through with the West End, that's a pretty large project. So we're hoping we see these hungry contractors wanting to get their projects on the list for next year. So these savings are something that we're really seeing as we bid these projects this time of year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Klein. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
As the engineer, will this take care, alleviate some of the flooding that Providence Care and the farm fields behind Providence Care? A lot of the residents, I'm going back four or five years ago when I went out there and met with some of the folks, that was a concern that they thought a lot of that was pulling from the farmer and us.
Yes, sir. Through you, Mr. President. So the farmer has done quite a bit of work on his property. We are doing everything we can to increase the capacity in our sewers where his underdrains currently go to. So it won't resolve the problem entirely, but it will significantly improve that problem. Our engineering staff has been working as the mediator, the intermediary between the farmer and the property owners to see if we can build swales, maybe, not we, but see if they can build swales, see if they can build ditches, if they can build mounds, whatever's needed out there to make sure that those are alleviated. We've narrowed down the exact problems, and we're still working through that. Since it's a private property issue, it's running a little bit slower with the finger pointing, but yes, it's going to be very much an improvement and going to help that situation that's out there.
If I may, is that one farmer owns that from Route 2 back in the city of Sandusky?
Through you, Mr. President, I don't, the person that farming it is leasing the field off of Providence, but I believe that they're leasing that entire area, and it's the same one that Pinewood over, on the north side of Pinewood, or is at the, over by Pinewood, he's farming that field as well. And he did some improvements out there to help the drainage, so he's going to be continuing to do some of those things out here.
And then we've met with folks at Providence Care also, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
Small item, I believe there might be a typo on that in item number three, they referenced item number six, and I believe it should reference item number four. When attorneys make these small errors, you folks have a name for them. I'm not sure what it is anymore, but.
Scrivener's error.
That's it, yes. When electrical contractors make mistakes, they're just mistakes. But a very small one, a very small one.
It would be a clerk error.
A clerk error, okay. Wow.
We can't electrocute people either.
True. Good point.
Additional questions or comments?
Side him.
Mr. Klein, you did touch on an important point that comes up occasionally as we talk with residents, usually when it's rainy out or the bay is high. It is the responsibility of private properties to deal with flooding on their property. It is not a city or township or government responsibility unless we cause it somehow. That is a misconception that comes up from time to time. We have no obligation to mediate those disputes, but I'm really glad that your office does because it provides a level of objectivity and sometimes a way for folks to speak to each other when they otherwise are so frustrated, understandably, it's kind of hard to discuss. So your team goes above and beyond them, above and beyond what's required, and that's very much appreciated. Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion in connection with item number two, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number three, please.
Item number three is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Great Lakes Demolition Company, LLC of Vickery, Ohio, for the McCartney Road reconstruction, storm sewer, and storm pump station project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion in second, discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number four, please.
Item number four is an ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement between the city of Sandusky and the Ohio Water Development Authority to finance the cost of construction for the McCartney Road construction, storm sewer, and storm pump station project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension and will use in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion in second, discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
That ordinance also is adopted. And our last item, please, number five, Mrs. Cresser.
Yes, item number five is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed safe routes to school, Sandusky Middle School Project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion in second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I'd ask for Mr. Klein to, who was certainly hogged the agenda again tonight, I would ask him to give us an explanation. This is a great story that dates back several years, and it's finally coming to fruition at a very opportune time. I'll let you explain what this is about, Mr. Klein, if you would.
Through you, Mr. President. This project really was initiated around 2016 when the planning department put in an application through ODOT for the safe routes to schools projects. And what was decided on at that time was to do as many improvements as we could do, more westerly of Hayes Avenue around where the high school was. And you'll see up on the screen right now what was decided, what was finalized are those intersections, the yellow intersections that are highlighted. Overall, there will be 14 intersections that are improved, which amounts to 51 curb ramps in those areas. We will also be doing about 2,700 linear feet on Camp Street. That's the green line on the west side of Camp Street. And there will also be some school flashers along Perkins and some bike racks at the new middle school. This was actually planned before the middle school, that we knew the middle school, that intermediate school was going to be going in there. So coupling this project with the resurfacing of Buchanan, the sidewalks that the schools are putting in, and then, you know, the work that we're going to be doing in 2023 on the safety improvements, the pedestrian improvements along the entire Hayes Avenue corridor, there's going to be a lot of work that's going on in these areas. It's, the item number seven that's listed on there, one thing I did want to point out is that item number seven, it says install countdown pedestrian signals at the intersection of Hayes and Pierce. That has been eliminated from this project, and the reason that we took it out is because we wanted to make sure that we put it in with the Hayes Avenue improvements project so that we had everything put in at the same time, everything had a good flow to it, it all looked the same. Like everything, we wanted to make sure that it was improved so that the pedestrian flows were timed and coordinated properly. That's something that we were really hoping to get in here, but when we needed to eliminate something based on budgetary numbers, that was the thing that stood out to us, that we wanted to make sure that we delayed. So with that being said, this is 100,000 or 100% funded through the Federal Highway Administration for just under $240,000. So we're hoping that in the future, we can, with our mobility plan and other plans that we'll be looking into in 2020, that we can look at doing more of these types of projects throughout all those school zones citywide at the key locations. And when it's 100% funded, that's some money that you obviously want to go after.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Commissioners, additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
Mr. Klein, construction documents absolutely guarantee implementation prior to middle school opening next summer.
Yes, my apologies, but this project, along with Buchanan, we're timing these projects so that the construction is completed, the school opens in 2020.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners first on the motion?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. That completes our regular agenda, so we now turn the meeting over to Mr. Webster for his report.
You, commission president, commissioners, audience, and staff, I will start with the donations. First, a thank you to Construction Equipment and Supply for donating the use of a lift worth $1,300 to the Division of Facilities and Properties for the purpose of decorating for the holiday season. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
Second.
And a motion in second, discussion. Objection, the motion will be approved. And hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks for that generous donation.
Second, the Sandusky Rec. Department applied for and received $4,000 towards the purchase of a shelter for the new Huron Park playground. A city commission approved that grant application in March. The pad has been poured for the shelter and will be installed once the weather breaks. The Erie Metro Parks Local Park Capital Improvement Grant Program occurs annually and includes three levels of grant funding. Grants under 1,000, grants between 1,000 and 3,000, and grant requests higher than 3,000. We'd ask for a motion to accept that generous donation from Metro Parks.
Second.
And a motion in second, discussion. Objection, the motion will be approved. And hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks.
Great. Also, Sandusky Recreation, their award-winning program, the Midtown Supper Club is back for season two. This year, the club will return to Halo Live Level 1 on Monday nights. The Level 2 class will be taught at Leah's Kitchen in downtown Sandusky. Halo Live will be providing their space free of charge on Monday nights for Level 1 classes and also on March 2nd, 3rd, and 4th for the Preparation Day Family Night Dinner and fundraiser dinner respectively. We'd ask for a motion to accept that generous donation.
Second.
And a motion in second, discussion. Objection, the motion will be approved. And hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks to both those entities.
And then I have one more. The For Love With Love Charity will be paying Leah's Kitchen fee for the rental space to Midtown Supper Club, season two, use of the kitchen, the amount of $835. That's a $25 one-day membership fee plus $45 per hour, hot and cold prep tables at three hours per day for six days. If we could also ask for a motion to accept that donation.
Second.
And a motion in second, discussion. Objection, the motion will be approved. And hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks to both those entities.
And then I have one more. The For Love With Love Charity will be paying Leah's Kitchen fee for the rental space to Midtown Supper Club, season two, use of the kitchen, the amount of $835. Midtown Supper Club, season two, use of the kitchen, the amount of $835. That's $25 one-day membership fee plus $45 per hour, hot and cold prop tables at three hours per day for six days. If we could also ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So move.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Objection, motion be approved. And hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to new and old business administration. The city is in receipt of an economic development transfer, or TREX, from Twisted Three LLC. The permit is coming from OSU-Witt LLC located in West Chester, Ohio. When completed, this business will see an approximate $70,000 investment, will create an estimated 12 to 22 new jobs, and upwards of $29,000 in new tax revenue annually. It is requested that City Commission by motion provide authorization to sign off on the TREX transfer form indicating the city endorses and acknowledges this transfer will be for an economic development project which will benefit the community. The proposed TREX will come back to City Commission one additional time in the near future for one more stop, where the city will indicate whether a hearing is requested prior to being authorized by the state. So, we'd ask for a motion providing that authorization.
So move.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
Who is Twisted Three?
It's the Orioles Club. I apologize, I should have included that. They're moving from, was that in public yet?
I don't know.
They're moving locations within the city.
That's okay.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay. Additional questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Also, we were recently notified that we did not receive the build grant that we applied for, for federal dollars to assist in Phase Two of the Sandusky Bay Pathway. Unfortunately, there were no pedestrian projects, which was a change from past application years. There was a much more of a push to fund highway projects, so that's very unfortunate. We think it's a poor departure from what the program was created to do several years ago, but ultimately, we'll continue to look for federal and state dollars to support the construction of the pathway. It does not necessarily change anything that we're doing with the pathway, it just means we'll look to other sources for that project. Moving on to the Police Department, congratulations to Officer Evan E. Step, who graduated November 13th from the Supervisor Training and Education Program, or STEP, the training lays the foundation for frontline supervisors and sergeants, which is a critically important position within the department. Officer E. Step will be promoted in early 2020. The transition training and development of newly promoted supervisors are of the utmost importance to any organization, and STEP fulfills that role in a truly significant way. Subject matter experts, both within and outside of law enforcement, cover 19 modules of instruction that are critical to new supervisors. Also, police wanted to welcome aboard Alexandra Carter, who was sworn in as a reserve officer on November 18th, and wanted to announce that they'll be passing out candy cane lights at the holiday lighting on Friday, November 29th. The Fire Department had an emergency repair to the generator at Station One. The generator's contract panel broke and a new panel was obsolete. Ohio CAT had to manufacture an entire control panel to work with the generator. The generator is vital to the department's operations. The cost for the repair was $14,759.55. Ohio CAT could not provide a quote due to the complexity and how labor-intensive the repair was. Therefore, legislation will be written and submitted for the December 9th, 2019 Commission Meeting, and the payment for this repair will be paid with funds from the EMS account. Moving on to Public Works, city staff from various departments have been hard at work preparing for various holiday festivities taking place downtown this week, including the tree lighting ceremony at Shade Mylander at 6:30 PM on Wednesday, also the holiday bazaar and brew at Shade Mylander Plaza from 2:00 to 5:00 PM on Friday, followed by the holiday lighting ceremony and arrival of Santa Claus in Washington Park at 6:00 PM, and a free showing of How the Grinch Stole Christmas at the Sandusky State Theater at 7:00 PM. Despite inclement weather, the division of streets and traffic has successfully collected leaves from each zone in the city. The second round of the program will begin this week. If residents cannot meet the schedule, there'll be a drop-off area for bagged leaves near the Marquette Drive entrance to the service center, seven days a week until January 6. Also, to enhance pedestrian safety, ADA accessible sidewalk ramps and high-visibility signage have been installed on Madison Street at Huron Park and Monroe Street at Central Park. And in the near future, motorist feedback signs that make drivers aware of their speed will be posted on Fifth Street as a first step towards traffic calming measures on Fifth. Moving on to Community Development, the rental registration program, yearly intransient rental registration packets and invoices for 2020 were sent out on the 20th. Registrations and related fees are due to the city no later than January 1st. Registrations were sent to over 3,000 properties totaling nearly 5,100 rental units. Anyone with questions regarding registration and inspection, please contact Kelly Cromer in Code Compliance at 419-627-5913. Again, that's Kelly Cromer in Code Compliance at 419-627-5913. Moving on to the Planning Department, the Regular Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November 26 at 4:30 PM in the Commission Chambers. The Regular Board of Zone Appeals meeting is scheduled for Thursday, December 19 at 4:30 PM in the Commission Chambers. The Regular Landmark Commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, December 18 at 4:00 PM in the Commission Chambers. And the Arts and Culture Commission meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, December 17 at 5:00 PM in the Commission Chambers. Also, Sandusky Transit will be hosting a public meeting on Wednesday, November 27 at 1:00 PM to discuss proposed changes to fixed routes for 2020. These changes are possible from a series of ODOT grants that STS received in October. The public meeting will be held at the City Commission Chambers located at 240 Columbus Avenue. I also wanted to provide an update that that Regular Planning Commission meeting I discussed for Tuesday, November 26 is actually at 5:00 PM in the City Commission Chambers. Thank you, Commissioner Waddington. And then finally, for Recreation, the Sandusky Rec Department has released the 2019/2020 Winter Fun Guide. This year's guide includes annual events and camps like the Winter Break Camp, baseball and cheerleading, along with new additions including softball pitching, Color Me Pretty, and adult tap classes. The guide was provided to each student attending school at Sandusky City Schools, Sandusky Central Catholic Schools, and Monroe Prop. The guide is also available in the Sandusky Recreation offices at 222 Meg Street or online at www.cityofsandusky.com/recreation. That concludes my remarks for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Webster. Commissioners, questions or comments for the city manager?
I have one more, I have a couple more updates. Kelly keeps walking them out.
Okay, all right.
Blame me, blame her, not me.
There's a lot going on, it's not a problem.
In celebration of the Thanksgiving holiday, city offices will be closed this Thursday and Friday, and there is a tree commission this Tuesday, tomorrow at 4:00 PM at the Service Center.
Service complex.
Yep, I apologize, on Sumon Avenue. That concludes my remarks for this evening.
Any other questions or comments for the city manager? Nothing. Any items of old business? Any items of new business? By a group. We turn now to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address any city items, please step to the microphone, share with us your name and address along with your thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. Just a couple of questions. I'm going to take you back to October 9th of 2018 at a Sandusky City Commission meeting. There was two, there were two votes taken on the closure of Shoreline Drive between Franklin and Hancock Street, and I'm noticing that, as part of the Shoreline Drive project, and I'm noticing that in the city manager's report that that is, it appears to still be an option into the future, closing those two, in between those two points. And I'm wondering, is the plan to revisit that issue after the first of the year when we have two new commissioners on board? Because I've noticed that the construction on Shoreline Drive has stopped at the point